Good evening and welcome everybody. Thanks for taking the time out of your evening to join us for this public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing for an Eagle permit application received from Chip Tokar Natural Resources Management. For the creation of two lakes for the purposes of commercial sand and gravel mining. In Parma Township, Jackson County. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. Just going to be helping to moderate the public hearing for us tonight. Before we get too far, just have a couple of things to go through. This is the agenda for tonight is what it'll look like. We're going through an introduction. That's what we're doing right now. The big thing to keep in mind is there's actually going to be two parts to this hearing tonight. There's going to be an informational session. And that's where the applicant is going to have a opportunity to present on the proposed project. We're also going to have some Eagle staff on the line who are going to say a few words about their role. Then we'll follow it up with the question and answer session. We will have an opportunity to ask questions on this project and application. That'll take us to around 6:30. Then we're going to go through the next part, which is the official hearing part. That'll be where you'll have an opportunity to make a statement for the record on this project. I'll also go through the ways to submit an official comment in case you didn't want to make a statement tonight and then who to contact with further questions. All right, a couple logistical things. For those of you who haven't joined us for a public hearing before, all lines are going to be muted during this hearing. So you'll be able to hear us and everything we say, but we won't be able to hear you. You can submit your questions at any time using the Q and A box in your Zoom toolbar. However, we will just be answering those questions only during the Q and A portion of the hearing tonight. And then we are recording this hearing. So it'll be on our YouTube channel in a couple of days. You can watch it again or forward it on or do what you like. All right, we actually have a number of different Eagle staff on the line. Just going to start by having, asking them to introduce themselves. And we're going to start with the Water Resources Division District Staff who are on the line.
Hi, my name is Maddie Orler and I am the hearings officer from the Jackson District Office. And then they, the environmental quality analyst reviewing this application. For the creation of two lakes for the purpose of commercial sand and gravel mining. With me tonight, we have folks from both the Water Resources Division, Water Use Assessment Unit and the Groundwater Permits Unit.
Yep, and I'm Jeff Pierce. I'm the district supervisor for the Water Resources Unit for Jackson and Lansing District Offices.
All right, thank you, Maddie and Jeff. Next, we have our Water Use Assessment Unit staff. If you please introduce yourselves.
Yep, hi, I'm Austin York. I work out of the Lansing Office. I'm a geologist with the Water Use Assessment Unit. And I'm the primary reviewer for the hydrogeologic report that's submitted. To Maddie for, for the purpose of this 301 and 303 application. Basically, I just review the report, determine if it seems accurate, point out anything that I think may not be correct. And in some cases, I'll provide estimates to her of what we think potential impacts could be for these projects.
Hi, I'm Lena Pappas. I'm the Senior Geologist with the Water Use Assessment Unit. And I'm operating in a support capacity for Austin.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jim Melon. I'm the Water Use Assessment Unit Supervisor in Eagles Water Resources Division. I supervise Lena and Austin. Our role is to review hydrogeological studies and/or groundwater models that are submitted to the district staff. In support of water resources permit applications. As Austin said, we've reviewed that information and then we provide our comments to the permitting staff, Maddie and Jeff. And then provide any other additional technical support along hydrogeology, geology lines that they might need.
All right, thanks to all three of you. All right, next up, our groundwater permits unit staff. And I think they have a slide here and I would like to say a few words as well.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christine Rendon. I'm the Groundwater Permits Unit Supervisor. Our unit issues wastewater permits across the state of Michigan. There was actually an application submitted regarding gravel mine washing at the site. And we were working through the application process and issuing, in the process of issuing a permit for groundwater discharge.
And I'm Joe Kujna. I'm the groundwater permit coordinator for their groundwater permit out of Lansing Office.
All right, thanks Christine and Joe. And I've got your slide here in case you want to say a few words.
Perfect. Yes, thank you for this opportunity. I, we received a, I guess I just wanted to back up and just tell you a little bit about our program. We're a little bit different than the resources side where we, we actually have the opportunity to do public hearings after a permit decision has been made. And ultimately, we operate under Part 31 Water Resources Protection Law where it regulates waste discharges to waters of the state. Our, our specific program falls under the groundwater quality administrative rules called Part 22. Under those rules, we have a general permit that is specific to gravel, sand, limestone, dolomite. Facilities that process wash water without additives to be discharged into the groundwater as a processed waste. There was a draft certificate of coverage under this general permit that was posted on public notice for the 38 North Parma Road. And it was posted as part of May 5th through 19th of 2023. As we received many comments related to this public noticing of this general permit for the groundwater discharge. And most of the comments were pertaining to the large quantity water withdrawal. And so that's why we decided to participate in this public hearing and, and listen in. And be able to assist and answer any questions as most of the comments that we received were not related to the actual discharge back into the groundwater. So we have shared the comments that many, maybe some of you had put on here and we're here to listen. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Christine and Joe. All right. So now, like I mentioned before, the applicant has an opportunity to present on the project. That'll be the next. Step in the hearing tonight. But before we do that, the only other thing I wanted to mention is that there were, once we get past this part and go into the question and answer session. If you have questions, you can type them in or you will have an opportunity to raise your hand in Zoom and verbally ask them. So that opportunity will be there. If people are calling in by phone, you'll be able to do that as well. And we'll explain how to do that here in a little bit. So with that, I'm going to try to, we're going to try to find Chip and Alyssa in the audience here. And let's see, I found Alyssa. Let's see here. And just looking for Chip.
Hey, Ryan, I don't see Chip. It's name logged in, but there were several people logged in under Alyssa. So maybe one of you.
Oh, yep.
Can you hear me? This is Chip.
Okay, Chip, yep, you're.
I have Alyssa, I have Alyssa here in the office with me, so.
Okay, so you're both there on the same microphone. Okay, perfect. All right. Well, thank you and welcome. Yeah, thanks for presenting tonight. I have your slides here. If you just want to let me know when to advance those slides, I'll do that for you. And then it'd just be great if you could keep it to around 10 minutes or so for the presentation to allow us to get, get through the evening. Take it away.
All right. Thank you very much, Ryan. My name is Chip Tokar. I'm a professional geologist. I am the owner of Natural Resources Management and also the owner and applicant of the property in this project. The name of the project is Parma Sand and Gravel. I have Alyssa Bell here with me. She's a geologist for NRM. I also have Tyler Taucher with me. He's our hydrogeologist. I also have a third-party consultant that we hired, Bruce Gillette. And we all together worked on this application together or in conjunction on various aspects of it. The next slide, please. We'll show, this next slide will show the project vicinity. As Ryan had said, it's located in Jackson County. The project site itself is located about one mile north of the interchange of Parma, North Parma Road and I-94. It's approximately 333 acres and the project is in Parma Township. It is a project that we propose for coring of sand and gravel. And the methods of mining are dry and wet processing of sand and gravel. We will be extracting the sand and gravel with the use of draglines or excavators. Both above and below the groundwater table. We are not conducting any blasting and we are not artificially pumping groundwater to lower the groundwater table. As part of the mining or extraction of the minerals. Next slide, please. This is another project location map. It shows an aerial photograph of the project site with the property boundaries. Important to note here is the site is bounded by North Parma Road to the east. Minor Road to the north. Brown Road to the west and Mackey Road to the south. Property itself is 96% cultivated fields. It has some smaller amounts of wooded wetlands, wooded areas and wetlands, excuse me. There's one non-jurisdictional wetland on the property that we identified through our evaluation. The surrounding land uses to are agricultural in use mainly and rural residential and some recreational property. Next slide, please. This slide here depicts our restoration plan or what the site will look like once it's completed as proposed. It contains two lakes, a south lake and a north lake. And it's separated through the center of the property with the post-plant processing area. As the methods of operation are conducted on this property, we have predicted it's going to take probably 30 to 40 years to complete fully. The south lake will be the first phase of, of the operation. And it will result in a lake of about 82 acres in area with an average depth of 45 feet. The north lake will be approximate is the second phase. So once the south lake's completed, we'll move to the north lake. And the north lake's going to be about 121 acres with an average depth of 50 feet. Next slide, please. This slide is a general depiction of the regional geology and it was based upon. Several journal articles and information that's presented in the literature for Jackson County Regional Geology. We also used local monitor of domestic wells, water supply wells and monitoring wells. That we had installed on our site. And generally, you can see. This is approximately a distance, covers a distance of about five miles. If you look down onto the bottom right-hand. Part of the slide, there's a square there that is a plan view. Looking down on a topographic map of the region, our site's located pretty much in the center there, a little south of it. But the cross-section line goes from the north and starts at a domestic well that we've located up there. And then travels down approximately five miles to the south by I-94. So what we're showing here is a general geology. The surface deposits are in consolidated sediments. Which are, consists mainly of sand and gravel and clay and silt and sands. Beneath that is the sandstone aquifer of the Saginaw Formation. And beneath that is the. Confining units of the Saginaw Formation and the Marshall Formation. And then beneath that, the cold water shale. Some things to, important to note on this slide is that. We tried to depict and it's hard, may be difficult to see, but there are some domestic well logs where we included on this cross-section. And those are depicted on the left part of the slide and shows a vertical boring or well in the, through the unconsolidated sediments. And into the unconfined aquifer of the Saginaw Formation and that's sandstone. And there's one also on the south part of the slide, and then one in the central portion of the slide. Our project is just to the right of the central portion of the slide where there's two boxes that are white. And that depicts the two lakes that we're going to be creating. Next slide, please. This is another cross-section. So this slide depicts cross-sections on the property. The top one is a cross-section from west to east and is through the, through the north lake. And what it depicts is the geology on the site, site-specific geology based upon the soil boring logs and the monitoring wells that we installed on the property. And so what you can see here is that there is unconsolidated materials at the surface that are dry. And once you get through the sand and gravel. You encounter the groundwater table, which is depicted in blue. The lake, the bottom of the lakes will be just above the consolidated bedrock materials or the clay, whichever we account. Encounter first, we are not going to mine within the bedrock. And that's also depicted on the cross-section that goes from the north part of the property to the south part of the property. So this bottom cross-section goes through both lakes, the north lake and then through the south lake. And this slide depicts the geology, site-specific geology in relation to the lakes and the land that we're going to leave between them. Again. I wanted to stress here that these borings or these cross-sections were created not only from the borings onsite. But there's also some well logs in the vicinity of the site that confirm similar geology and onsite. Well, and onsite irrigation well, I'm sorry. Next slide. Their hydrogeologic investigation was a big part of this application. I had been reviewed by several people. Our hydrogeologic analysis was conducted in accordance with guidance that Eagle provides. And we have been doing these types of evaluations on several similar projects over the past two decades. And the valuation focuses on identifying the groundwater table, the groundwater characteristics, things such as groundwater flow. And it also focuses on identifying surface features such as wetlands and then lakes and streams. And this is not just for the site, but it's for surrounding properties as well. Our assessment methodologies are consistent with the Eagle guidance. And we, again, we have been performing these over several decades on other projects. And the main part of that is a water budget, which we have to develop. And what we do with that water budget in accordance with the guidance is evaluate any potential impacts to the groundwater table. Once the lakes are created, where the water surface is exposed then, and then exposed to evaporation or evaporative losses. Some additional evaluations that are not required under the guidance typically in the application. We have also conducted, and one of those is we hired Fishback, which is another engineering firm. That is experienced in conducting these valuations for quarry operations. And they have evaluated independently our data and, and came up with conclusions. They've also used data that we provided for site-specific, but they also use their own data that they gathered desktop-wise from surrounding areas. Next slide, please. So the main parts, what we show here on this evaporated loss is we'll come up with maps and evaluate. What potential impacts are to the groundwater table during the project and once the lakes are completed. So once the surface water bodies are fully open is the time at which most of the water is obviously exposed to evaporative losses. And what we do is we model that through the use of a method using pumping wells to simulate that drawdown effect. And we come up with these zone of influence areas on the surface of the lake. Typically, once we conduct several months of monitoring the groundwater elevations and other items and characteristics of the groundwater. We can develop these evaluate evaluations and develop these zone of influences. And what we essentially found on this slide is similar to what we find in a lot of our other sites. Is that there are impacts to the groundwater table that are measured in inches or, or feet. And in this case, to the, the impacts that we found, the potential impacts that we found as part of this project, if it's allowed. To be permitted is that to the nearest pond and wetlands, there'll be. Impact of about four to three inches of loss, evaporative loss to the groundwater table. Fishback's evaluation. Came up with similar results and that's shown on the bottom part of the slide here. And they came up with about four inches of using this evaporative loss. Calculations. So they general, their evaluation generally supports our findings and conclusions. All of this information has been submitted to Eagle as an available for review. We had provided some addendums on some of the information that was originally provided and that is on file with Eagle as well. Next slide, please. I'm running out of time here, but the conclusions that we found, found in our evaluation and supplied with the permit application. Is that generally conduct, we conducted through this analysis. An evaluation of the hydrogeologic conditions on the site and in the vicinity of the site. Our anticipated outcomes or potential impacts were that there would be no adverse impacts on regulated wetlands, streams. Or waters of the state on the property itself or the surrounding properties. And that includes the surface water and groundwater. And the groundwater domestic supply wells that are near the site. Most of the wells on the site, it's important to note, are screened within the sandstone aquifer below the unconsolidated aquifer. Since we are not going to be mining into the sandstone aquifer, there would be little effect on those water supplies. There also will be no lowering of the groundwater table beyond documented seasonal fluctuations. That's important to note because our continual monitoring of the water table can show these seasonal fluctuations and they are over two feet and sometimes up to three feet. And those are normal seasonal fluctuations we find on, on almost every site. Another important thing to note is that during the course of this project, it will take several decades to complete. And we will be monitoring from the onsite monitoring wells periodically throughout the project. For example, we'll be monitoring groundwater elevations at a minimum quarterly throughout the year. We're also going to conduct groundwater quality monitoring from those wells. We'll provide annual site evaluations that will be required by the township. And this includes providing aerial photography. And we will also be required to adhere to monitoring and record keeping required by other regulatory permit conditions. As said in the beginning of this present, before this presentation by the groundwater unit. That those, there's monitoring and record keeping requirements by them if we're using groundwater. For example, to wash our material and then recirculate it back into the aquifer. And then our site, more importantly, will be reevaluated by Eagle every five years if permitted. And since these are five-year permits. They'll evaluate the progress of the operation, any data that we collect during the project itself. And then evaluate it again for re, during reapplication after every five years. Next slide, please. So that concludes my presentation. I'm sorry if I took too long. I just, it's hard to get everything in here, but thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for providing that information, Chip. Like I mentioned before, we're going to move right into the question and answer session for tonight. To ask a question, you can submit your question using the Q and A box at the bottom of your screen. Looks like we already have several in there. If you prefer to ask your question verbally, you can click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And what that will do is it'll raise your hand in Zoom, we'll call on you and then we will. Unmute you so you can ask your question. Or if you're on the phone, you can type pound two in your receiver. And what that will do is it'll raise your hand in Zoom and I'll, we'll call on you using the last four digits of your phone number. And we'll just kind of go back and forth depending on how many questions we have between the Q and A box and the raised hands. And I'd like to invite our other panelists to turn their cameras and mics on for this question and answer panel. So welcome back, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. All right, the first question here, there's some law, I'm going to paraphrase it a little bit because there's some long, longer questions in here. The first one is. And actually, it looks like. This one is from Ed. Ed, I'm going to let you raise, raise your hand and ask your question. Because the first one, it looks like your hand is raised and the first one I had is from you. That might be a better way to go. So Ed, we're going to unmute you. Now you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Thank you, Ryan. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great, thanks. Thanks for taking the time to do this and pull this together. Well, no doubt you'll have a, a number of questions to field. I just wanted to, that are specific to the, the data. And some, and a fair amount of research that we've performed on our end between the Parma citizens. Some hydrogeologists that are helping us and the Parma Preservation Society who's, who's been looking at this very closely. So we, we appreciate, you know, the time that you'll be taking, answering our questions and considering, considering those. First, just a general question. The applicant, NRM, mentioned Fishback. But they hired a third-party hydrogeology consultant initially, Michigan Hydrology. Who essentially strongly recommended denying the application or minimally obtaining and confirming, you know, more details from the applicant. Based on their thorough hydrogeology data specific to the proposed site. Can you help me better understand why we're, why we are reviewing this application today? After it was essentially rejected by the initial third-party consultant hired by Parma Township?
So I can begin to speak a bit about that. So we take all of the comments and everything received from both the applicant and the third party in this case. Into account in our own review of the application and of the associated documents. So their hydrogeo. And the document provided by the third party as well. So while we review their hydrogeo and the third party. And incorporate that as part of our review, ultimately, we were still able to mark their hydrogeo and their application complete. And move forward into the processing period, which is where we are now. For the application, we have a checklist for the hydrogeo documents. So if they're ultimately, if they contain all of the information that we need, then we're able to mark the application complete and move forward. Even though there was various documents submitted from various parties, we still take that all into our consideration while we're processing the application.
Well, that, that's great. Thank you. So what you're saying, Maddie, is the details of that report and, and others. But that report specifically from Michigan Hydrology to Parma Township has been reviewed? And, and all of those facts taken into consideration?
Yes, yep, that's correct. So we take all of the comments and information relative and relevant to our review into our consideration. When we're reviewing the application and hydrogeo as well.
Do the Parma citizens or Parma Township have access to that review?
Yes, yep. So all of the comments that we received and all of the supplementary documents that we received during the public notice period. Are all on my Enviro, along with that, application documents are on, on my Enviro as well.
Hey, thanks for your questions, Ed. I'd like to move on to some, some other ones here. So if you have, if you have questions after we get some, do some more, can you feel free to raise your hand? But we have a lot of questions here in limited time, so I want to make sure we get to them. Thank you for your question and for those answers. All right. So the next question. What are the requirements under a Part 31 discharge permit for the operator to assess if any groundwater discharge is occurring? During the operation or impacting area drinking water wells? All the residents in the area on private drinking water wells and many of them are finished. In the shallow aquifer. So this, maybe this is a question for Christine or Joe.
Yes, I can, I can take that, Ryan. Thank you. That's a great question. And it's pertaining to the groundwater discharge permit. So as I described earlier, that is a general permit. And in the general permit, it's actually written to be a violation to be injurious to the groundwaters of the state. So that means for the protection of groundwater used for drinking water purposes, along with groundwater that could be potentially venting into nearby surface water bodies. And it's another condition in the general permit that any water utilized in the washing of gravel cannot contain any additives that could be potentially harmful. Actually, it cannot contain any additives at all. And it also has to be equivalent to either potable water. Or something along the line of meeting our groundwater discharge standards to be protective of groundwater for drinking water or surface water. So if it is not, that would be a violation of the permit as well. So what is going back into the groundwater would be the same as what is being pulled out and it would be protective of those drinking water supply wells.
All right. Now, thank you, Christine. All right, next up is related to water withdrawal. All right, next up is related to, uh, water withdrawal. Um. Uh, paraphrase a little bit, just that mining sand and gravel can take thousands of waters, uh, gallons of permitted groundwater for processing transport. Um. The applicant needs to expand upon the mining operation that will create the lakes. Has Eagle considered the withdrawal of groundwater? And the material that is removed in the water budget review? I'm assuming that's related to the, the use of the water. I'm not sure if. Jim Melon or, or, or one of the other water use staff, maybe that would be the best.
I, I can take it. Um, so the, the, the extraction of material, uh, that is something we're taking into consideration as. We evaluate short-term impacts throughout the excavation process. That's another thing we can do in our mass balance. So the massive soil sediment out and the, the amount of water that would flow back in to replace that sediment. That is something we, we do consider. Um, speaking to the, the pumping of, of. The, the lake water to, to wash sediments and then, uh, put it back in the lake. It, uh, based on what NRM has given us, it looks like it's a. A closed loop where they're, they're just going to pump from the, if I'm not mistaken, from the South Lake. Uh, to a treatment facility where they're going to wash, um, you know, separate. Um, grains of different sizes and then, uh, put that in a sedimentation pond where. Finer grain materials are going to fall out and then that water should be pumped back into the South Lake. So it's never really completely removed from the system. It's, and it's always there. Um, uh, sometimes it's moving from South Lake to a pond, just a few hundred feet. To the north of South Lake and then back to South Lake and that's a flow-through lake. It's up gradient. Of, so I believe that'll be a flow-through lake and it's, uh, I'll double check that, but it's up gradient of South Lake. So it should. Um, even as sediments are settling, it should just flow back into the lake while, while that's occurring.
Okay, thanks, Austin. Um, and take one more. Uh, related to water withdrawal, maybe while you're still on, on there and then, uh, we'll go to some raised hands. Um, and I'm going to paraphrase, paraphrase this one a little bit too, uh, seen pond and wetlands disappear. Um. And, and Ann Arbor wells are going dry. What is the contingency plan if Eagle and NRM are wrong and wells and wetlands are adversely impacted by the mining activity?
Um, well, I, I don't know if I can answer the contingency plan. That might be Matty's. Field a bit more than mine, but I can assure you that we're doing everything we can to most accurately evaluate what the, what the impacts will be to local wells and wetlands.
And I can expand on that a little bit too. So for similar projects in the past, um, if we do determine that a permit. Is able to be issued, um, oftentimes a requirement is additional monitoring. Um, through the use of monitoring wells that are already installed and then potentially. Um, requiring the installation of additional monitoring wells and continuation of monitoring for all of those levels of water. Um, for all of those wells that are installed.
All right, thanks, Maddie and Austin. I'm going to go ahead and call on. Uh, Mike McKenney, we're going to unmute you if you want to ask your question. And the other thing I was just going to say, if you have any comments. Just as a reminder, you can save your comments for the public hearing portion, which is going to be after this Q and A session. So, um, so please, uh, limit, uh, your, um. Limited to questions, I guess. Mike, you're, you're on. You can ask your question when you're ready.
Um, the state has a method to show the impact of evaporation. From the lakes by placing a well in the center of the lake. And pumping the evaporation amount out of the well. An impact is shown by lowering of the water table around the well. And it extends outward from the well. So doesn't the impact of evaporation appear on the lake's edges by lowering the water table? All around the lake at the same time, but why not put the well at the lake's edge?
Here, I can take that. Um, so what, what we do is we put that, we put that, uh, groundwater well in the center of. I can put a few depending on the size of the lake. If, if one doesn't really accurately characterize. Uh, the geometry of the lake as best I can, we can do more than one, but in this case, I think there's four totals that are being used to kind of simulate the impact. Uh, what we do is we, we evaluate, uh, the drawdown from the center, like you said, um, and then we measure the impact at the edge of the lake. Um, what that does is. In, in the case, since traditionally, um, these solutions are used for drawdown and. Geologic material. So actually. If anything, I, it's my belief that these models were, will kind of. Overestimate the impact, um, at the edge of the lake. And then we take that. Value at the edge of the lake and we just continue to project it outward, uh, continuing using the, the Tice curve. We also consider. Here in the water use assessment unit, the, uh, impact to the change in the hydraulic gradient. That is, um, where you'll see water table rising down gradient of the lake and then falling in the up gradient direction of the lake. Um. Of course, we're, we're open to, uh, discussing modifications to. The guidance and, and we'd be open to, to working with the group to, to modify that in the future. Um, if, if, if it were to, you know. Improve, improve our method, but historically we've, we've done it from the, uh, center. Measure impacts at the edge and then continue to project those impacts from the edge outward. Um, considering both the Tice drawdown from that edge and the change in the hydraulic gradient.
All right, thanks for your question, Mike, and for the answer, Austin. All right, um. Got a, uh, I'm going to go for another raised hands and we're running out of time, so try to get to a couple more questions. Um, David Miller, we're going to unmute you so you can unmute yourself, um, and ask your question. And it looks like you're going to mute it on our, our end. Feel free to unmute yourself and, and ask away when you're ready. There, David? David? All right. It looks like maybe David hasn't, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You might be having a microphone issue. We'll give you a second to.
Oh, there it is. You there?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I muted my headset, so I, you couldn't hear me.
Gotcha. We can hear you now. Go, go ask your question.
All right, this is for the, uh, Jackson board here, uh, Eagle, I guess it is. Um. Can anybody on this board? Now, I'm, I'm David Miller. I, I'm affected by this hundred, uh, you step off my property line and I'm going to walk into a gravel pit. All right. Can anybody on this board guarantee me one hundred percent, no ands, no ifs, no shoulda, coulda, woulda? That my well will not be contaminated. The creek down on North Parma Road will not be drained. It's a swamp that was put in. To expand the airport in Jackson will have no damage to it and the other wells in this area will not be damaged whatsoever. Um, we're talking about processed wastewater. The word waste scares me. You're putting that back into the environment. So can anybody on this board guarantee me one hundred percent?
I, I can speak to the, to the impacts, the water, uh, resource impacts. I can't really speak to the contamination side of that. I'll leave that for someone else, but. Um, I wish anything in life could be guaranteed one hundred percent. That would make my life a lot easier and a lot less stressful. Yes, um, I, I can't, I can't guarantee anything one hundred percent even. I can't guarantee that I will, uh, wake up in the morning tomorrow one hundred percent. But what I can tell you is that we are going to evaluate what the impacts at those wells. Uh, what, that, what the impact of the wetland will be and what the impact of the stream will be. I'm not going to. Say that there's no impact. What, we will do our best to, uh. Quantify what that impact is and I, and I'll provide that report to Maddie and that, that will inform her permit decision.
Well, that needs to be looked at very hard because that, those wetlands were put in to assist Jackson in expanding the airport runways.
Okay.
All right, we have to take that into account. That here in Parma, we help out Jackson and then we want to put a gravel pit that. Could possibly damage all this.
David, you'll have a chance to make a statement when we get to that point. Let's, Maddie, I want to make sure we get to this one other question. Maddie, did you have something you wanted to say? I thought you were going to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we're still reviewing the application. Um, no decisions have been made, so we're still reviewing all of the impacts to the resources. Um, so it's still in process.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep, and thanks for your question, David. All right, I want to get to one more question. We are, we're way over our, um. Time we were shooting for, but these are some great questions, so we wanted to go on a little longer. Um, this would be the last question for us. Has Eagle field checked the wetland delineation? And how will the flowing artesian wells be impacted by the mining? Rice Creek impacts, it says.
So I can speak for the delineation. Um, I've reviewed the delineation and I went out on site and checked everything. Um, there is the small unregulated wetland on site. And then we are still reviewing for secondary wetland impacts.
Yeah, and as far as the flowing artesian wells go, uh, traditionally, as I understand, flowing artesian conditions occur in a confined setting of bedrock. So if you are in the confined bedrock. Um, I don't believe at this time your well will be impacted. This is. You know, as, as Chip showed in his presentation, it's a, it's an excavation of the unconfined aquifer. If, if any wells would be impacted, um. Which I'm sure there will be some, some impact that we'll, we'll measure and quantify. It would be in the unconfined aquifer and those, those aren't, uh, wells that would be experiencing artesian conditions. Again, concerning artesian wells, I. It doesn't appear to me that there will be an impact in artesian wells at this time, but I'm absolutely going to consider all, all nearby wells in their view and I'll, I'll speak to that in my report.
All right, thanks. Yeah, thank you for that question and for that answer, Austin. We're going to move on here, um. To keep us on schedule. Thank you to all of our panelists and to all of you for those questions. If you have additional questions. Um, I'll provide Maddie's contact information, so you'll be able to reach Maddie with any additional questions we didn't get to, but we really need to get to the hearing part. Of tonight and that's where you're going to have a chance to make a statement for the record. Everyone will have an opportunity to make a statement. Um, on this application. So, um, but in case you don't want to make a statement tonight, I want to let, make sure you know that there are other ways to submit an official comment. So you can do that by my Enviro, uh, the My Enviro system submission HPQ G two J. Looks like zero B four J M B. And you see a link there. We're going to put that link in the chat so that you'll be able to access it in the chat. It can go right to my Enviro. Uh, or by mail to Maddie Orler at Water Resources Division, Jackson District Office, three zero one East Lewis Glick Highway. Jackson, Michigan, four nine two zero one. And the comment period. After this public hearing will be open, open for ten days, which is going to be, um, September sixteenth. So that's how long you will have and. We're going to move on to the hearing portion. So, um, Maddie, I'd like to invite you to read the opening statement. Uh, one more thing I'll do want to mention is that I will show this slide again. After the hearing in case we don't, you don't get all your statements and you'll have the slide up and be able to make supplementary statements. So with that, go ahead and take it away, Maddie.
All right, I have quite a bit to read, so everyone bear with me. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Maddie Orler and I am the district representative in the Water Resources Division. Of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I will be serving as the hearings officer for this public hearing on Eagle submission number HPQ. G two J zero B four J M B. With me tonight, we have Jeff Pierce, Jackson and Lansing District Offices Water Resources Division Supervisor. Austin York, geologist, Lena Pappas, Senior Geologist, Joseph Cusino. Environmental Quality Analyst and Christine Rendon, Groundwater Permit Supervisor. To describe how this is going to work tonight, I will begin with some background information about why we are here. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that. I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide comments and we will spend the majority of the time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will read the closing statement. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams. Wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream or wetland. Constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks. And building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland or floodplain. The law governing these responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four, PA. Four fifty-one as amended, also known as Act four fifty-one. We are here tonight because Chip Tokar, Natural Resources Management. Has proposed to create two lakes for the purpose of commercial sand and gravel mining. North Lake is proposed to be approximately one hundred and twenty-one point three acres in size. South Lake is proposed to be approximately eighty-one point nine acres in size. The two lakes are proposed to total approximately two hundred and three point two acres. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice. Meet certain criteria set by part three oh one inland lakes and streams in part three oh three wetlands protection of act four fifty-one. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the regulated resources on site. When reviewing an application for a permit under the provisions of part three oh one of act four fifty-one. Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by section three oh one oh six of part three oh one. The department shall issue a permit if it finds the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights. In passing upon an application, the department shall consider the possible effects, the proposed action upon the inland lake or stream. And upon waters from which or into which its waters flow. And the uses of all such waters, including uses for recreation, fish and wildlife, aesthetics, local government, agriculture, commerce and industry. The department shall not grant a permit if a proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy. Any of the waters or natural resources of the state. This part. Does not modify the rights and responsibilities of any riparian owner to use of his or her riparian water. A permit shall specify that a project completed in accordance with this part shall not cause unlawful pollution as defined by part thirty-one. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give everyone interested in Chip Tokar Natural Resources Management's proposal. An opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in marking the, in making the decision. Whether or not to is, issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision. On whether or not there is widespread support or opposition to the project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments, but before I do so. I need to mention that this notice of the hearing was published online on Eagle's calendar and in the Jackson Citizen Patriot. In the Saturday, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three edition. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session. If you have a comment to provide, raise your hand in the Zoom to wa- toolbar. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, manner, we will follow these steps. First, the applicant has already had the opportunity to describe the proposed project. Second, we will then call on those who have indicated in their registration that they would like to speak. After that, we will call on all those that have raised their hand in their Zoom toolbar. That they would like to make a comment if they haven't already been called upon. As a reminder, if you are participating in this hearing via telephone only, follow the directions of the moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You may also submit your comments to Eagle via my Enviro portal, email or US mail. When the comments have been completed, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given four minutes to make their comments. We will indicate to you when you have a minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please als- also recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project. And listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information Eagle would consider in making its decision whether or not to issue a permit. On the proposed project. The public po- comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days. From the day of this hearing, ending on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten-day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as proposed. Or with modifications, or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Enviro portal website. and searching the application number HPQ G two J zero before J M B. Thank you for your attention. We will begin calling the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
Yeah, thank you, Maddie. Uh, just a couple of other things I wanted to add, um, just so you're aware, everyone will have an opportunity to make a comment. Uh, if you're called upon and it's your turn and you have more than one person, uh, who would like to make a comment, it's going to be one comment per person. Just let me know that you have someone else on the line who would like to make a comment. Uh, and we'll just go through whoever is on the phone. Uh, I also recognize there are quite a few questions there in the Q and A box. We'll provide those questions to our panelists afterwards, or again, I mentioned before, I'll provide Maddie's contact info if you have follow-up questions. But the panel will not be responding to any questions. So this is strictly, you have four minutes to make your statement, um, uh, on what you would like related to this application and project. As Maddie mentioned, um, we're going to start with the list of people that indicated during registration that they wanted to make a comment. So I have a list of five people and then we'll go on to people who have their hands raised. And again, if you're on the phone and would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand in zoom by selecting pound two on your phone. So you'll have that opportunity. Um, so with that, uh, we're going to go ahead and get started. Feel free to mention your name and any organization you're affiliated with, um, when you're called on. And then I'll start with the first person on my list and then let you know who's up next, just so you have a good feel for um, when your spot is, if you're coming up. So with that, we're going to unmute Scott Penrod. And then after Scott, it will be David Miller. So Scott, you are unmuted on our end. You can begin when you're ready. And unmute yourself, because it looks like you're still muted. There you go.
All right, thank you, Ryan. I appreciate that. Um, I just need a little clarification, I guess, because is it my understanding that the questions that we submitted during the question and answer session will become part of the public record? Or do I need to reread my question at this time so that it becomes part of the public record?
Well, the question was for the Q and, Q and, I mean, the, it is part of the record because we, we maintain a record of the materials associated with this hearing. But you have an audience with the panel, so this is an opportunity to make any statements that you would like, um, or you could follow up in writing. So those are kind of the official. So I'd recommend making your statement right now, um, because this is kind of the official format for making statements, even though we will have those comments in your, in that you typed in the Q and A box, if that makes sense.
All right, thank you for clarification on that. Um, like I said, my name is Scott Penrod. I live at four one one six nine Brown Road. Um, I am a member of the Parma Preservation Society. I own the property to the west of phase one and the property to the south of phase two. My properties have wetlands, ponds and artesian well and the rice creek and stream drain. Our Parma ordinance specifically states that water flow cannot be altered to neighboring properties. How can then, how can that not happen with this proposed project? We also have a large wetland bank set in a state of trust, only three quarters of a mile from the proposed site. How will the issues of that not being affected be addressed also? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Scott.
Uh, we have another person here, if you.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Keith Blaine. Uh, I live at three nine nine five North Parma Road and I am a member of the Parma Preservation Society as well. Uh, my property is right adjacent to, uh, the proposed mines. And, uh, uh, I, I guess my, my comment is there is great concern about quality and supply of water. And, uh, I'm curious to know, uh, how many aggregate mines have actually been approved by Eagle that have, you know, over eighty homes immediately around the area. It just seems like a lot of population to be directly affected to me.
All right, thanks for your comment, Keith. Is anyone else on the line?
Yep, we have, we have another one here.
Yeah, my name's Phil Campo, C A M P A U, thirty-one hundred North Parma Road. So I live just to the south, got a two acre lot there. The, the traffic from all of this is, is an issue for me. The big trucks coming down the road with all this gravel and the noise. Um, one of my big concerns is the pond water. I have about an acre pond there. And I'm really concerned that that pond is going to become a cesspool polluted mess from your, your wastewater as Mr. Miller alluded to earlier. And, um, I have a little bit familiarity with brownfields. We, we worked on a brownfield site in Jackson at Cooper and I ninety-four. And they are a royal mess and I am very concerned that this project could turn into something like that. If it gets, uh, gets away from you, you get down in that soil and in that water table and you, you really don't know what you have till you start digging. And I think it's, it's just, it's a beautiful sight right now and it doesn't, we don't want that in our backyard here in Parma. So that's my position. I sure hope we can work that out. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment, Phil. Someone next?
I think that's it for the moment. We'll raise our hand if we have another one later.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, team.
All right, so next up is David Miller and it looks like we have two David Millers that are logged on as David Miller. So if David, if you're, can you raise your hand so we know which one is you? All right, it looks like you are unmuted on our end. Oh, it looks like they're both unmuted or.
Yeah, the other one's my wife.
Okay, gotcha.
She's in the back bedroom. Couldn't figure out how to hook up two headsets. So you as our Jackson committee, you guys ha- ha- have a big responsibility in front of you. Well, look at it, you're our government officials and you're here to protect us from groundwater contamination and all the other bad things we've talked about here today. But I want you to sincerely know that you guys are playing with our livelihood. And the recipients of what you guys pass or not pass is going to affect me. It's not going to affect Ryan. It's not going to affect the guy over in Blackman. It's not going to affect people twenty miles away. It's going to affect us, Scott and everybody else you just heard from, because we all live around this circle. And we're all scared to death. And you can't guarantee me that it's not going to happen. And that's what we're looking for is guarantee. And you can tell me there's no guarantees in life. There is one and that's we're going to die and I hope I don't die from this wastewater. So you guys have a huge responsibility. I really hope you do your own research. You don't rely on NRM's research. We have been met with deceit and dishonesty here in Parma Township with them. And I really hope you get your own findings, do your own appraisals and draw your own conclusions. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, David. Is, did your wife want to make a comment too, if she's on the line? Or, or no?
Yes, no, Bobby. He's trying.
Okay, it looks like, yep, she's unmuted.
I am muted. I don't have to yell down the hallway for help. All right, my name is Bobby Miller. I live at one 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 five eight Mackey Road. And phase one is right on the other side of my property line. I have an autoimmune disease and it adversely affects my lungs. Um, I've been in the hospital several times due to lung issues. I am afraid of the dust, of the groundwater, of what this is going to cause the disruptions in my life. What is it going to do to my health? I'm already autoimmune deficit. I have no immunity. What is this going to do with the chemicals that they're going to be using, the dust that is going to be caused? The wastewater that we don't know what's, what's going to happen there. I know there's other individuals on the property line, miner Deveru, um, North Parma Brown that have these issues also. There's older couples that live on our roads. This is going to adversely affect them and their health. Is this going to cause me more health issues to where I am going to die earlier than I normally would? I do everything in my power to keep myself healthy. It's this outside that is coming in that is going to adversely affect my health and others. Also, my property value, what is this going to do to our property values? You know, uh, we're looking to maybe sell within the next three to five years. Am I going to be able to get what this property is totally worth? Or is it just going to plummet because there is a, um, mining in the my backfield? And that's all I have to say. I do not want this. Nobody does. Listen to us, please.
Thanks for your comment, Bobby. All right, so next up is a Lucas Sponsler and then after Lucas is, uh, Mike Wozinski. So Lucas, looks like you're unmuted on our end. Uh, you can unmute and begin when you're ready.
I hope I'm unmuted now. Cool.
Yep.
Um, I have, uh, what was originally for the Q and A, so I'll just restate them again so that they get into the, into the commentary here. Um, and thank you for, for, uh, having this hearing. First of all, but, uh, my first question and these, okay, so why is Eagle, uh, just using methods that are at best initial estimates of the impact on the water? When a numerical model would be more accurate for such a large mining operation in Lake Creation? And then my next question, um, a- as a statement would be, uh, why was a pumping test not conducted to know the drawdown from real life data? Um, as opposed to, uh, simply using slug tests and literature values? So those are my, my two, uh, previously stated as questions or framed as questions. But, uh, once again, thank you for, um, for holding this hearing this evening.
Yeah, thanks for your, uh, your comment, Lucas. All right, so next up is Mike, uh, Wosinski. And then Rebecca McKenney is after Mike. So Mike, looks like you're unmuted. You can begin when you're ready.
Okay, I'm Mike Wozinski. I'm a, uh, geologist with Pangaea Environmental LLC. Um, I started working in the mining industry in nineteen seventy-nine in Wyoming. Worked for the DEQ, retired from them and also taught for a while. So I've been doing this for, um, close to half a century. Um, the first, I'm curious why this permit application has gotten this far after the hydro geological study was rejected by Parma Township's consultant. Uh, because we also expressed serious concerns about the methods employed not following basic hydro geological concepts and that boring logs were edited between the township review and what was submitted by NRM to Eagle. Uh, four of the six borings indicated dry bedrock beneath the confining layer in the report submitted to the township. NRM has acknowledged the existence of this confining layer. The bedrock surface is uneven in that area with the bedrock va- valley being buried to the west as indicated on GeoWeb face. Also, it's, uh, uneven just based on the, um, borings that were conducted on the site. Um, and the borings were along the perimeter. What's in the center where they're going to be mining? Removing this, um, clay layer, this confining layer, what's, it's going to, if it's dry, the bedrock's dry, some of it's going to drain. You could impact artesian wells, our flowing artesian wells in that area. That moving this thin clay layer could impact those. Um, the Tice equation is misused. I'd like, I can't show the, uh, video, but, uh, you can't do that for a lake. You, you have to have porous media. Um, and I'll send the figure that I have and I've talked to Mario Fusco about this, who went out to lunch a couple of weeks ago. And we had a discussion about problems I see with the methodology, especially using the Tice equation to estimate a drawdown from a surface water body. I've talked to several geologists who have as much experience as I do and all of them agree with me, that's not appropriate. Um, I've witnessed wells going dry in Ann Arbor Township and wetlands being impacted elsewhere. A farm pond was destroyed by mining in Kent County. Uh, what's the contingency plan if Eagle grants a permit and wetlands or wells are impacted as many of us are asserting may happen, including highly experienced geologists? I would like to add, uh, the pond that disappeared was, uh, NRM was the consultant and stated there will be no impact. And there was. I'm done.
Yeah, thanks for the comments, Mike. All right, um, last person that's on my list who pre-registered and indicated they want to make a comment is Rebecca McKenney. And then we'll go to the raised hands. So Rebecca, you're unmuted. You can begin when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, uh, comment about the residential use of groundwater. Uh, the residential use of groundwater cannot be restricted by industrial operations under common law. And I'm wondering if Eagle has evaluated or will evaluate the impact to the groundwater that creates the wetlands of, of site that may or may not be regulated. And I'm also questioning the due diligence of this operator, um, is is that taken into consideration whether they are a trustworthy applicant? You know, if they are operating in other areas and their, uh, procedures, uh, result in, um, lakes going dry, wells going dry. Uh, is there some consideration of their record, uh, in, in granting or not granting this application? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Rebecca. Um, it looks like Scott Tenniswood. Scott, you are unmuted at our end.
Awesome, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Awesome. So we've heard, uh, uh, so much today about hydro geological investigations and analysis and that these have been done, uh, over several decades. And, uh, the importance of these investigations and, uh, analysis, uh, in determinations of these types of projects moving forward. Um, the first question that I have is that, uh, was the project that was done up in Ann Arbor by Mid Michigan Material? Um, was the, uh, hydro geological investigation analysis that was done on that? Um, did that come to the same conclusion that there would be no adverse impact on surrounding water supplies, uh, uh, for residential wells? Uh, we know that there's been twenty-five homes that are in the vicinity, um, around that pit. And, uh, you know, if the analysis was, was going to be no impact and yet there was. So what kind of an impact are we supposed to expect here? Some of the residents have, uh, seen, uh, drops of seventeen feet in their static water levels. Um, some residents have, uh, had to drill twenty feet deeper than they were before to hit the next, uh, aquifer. Um, and those aquifers were contaminated with arsenic, uh, which, uh, we know we don't want in our water. Uh, so these residents then have to, uh, spend additional costs and resources to properly, uh, remove these impurities in the water that they're bathing in, the water that they're drinking, the water that their children are brushing their teeth in. Um, so, uh, I'm curious as to know if these, uh, hydro geological investigation analysis have proven that, that it was supposed to be safe up there. How are we still supposed to be, uh, resting assured that it'll be safe here? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Scott. All right, um, next up is Mike Scott. And just a reminder, if you have a, want to make a comment and you haven't made one already, feel free to raise your hand and zoom. If you're on the phone, select pound two, um, on your phone and that will raise your hand as well. And we'll, I'll call on you in turn. So Mike, it looks like you're up next. Mike Scott, you can begin when you're ready.
All right, thank you. Uh, the, the May eighth, two thousand twenty-three Michigan hydrology report says cutting a lake into a water table that slopes downhill will cause the uphill part of the lake to lower the water table in that area. And the downward slope to have the water table raised. Should the state consider this impact? Do they acknowledge that this does occur? Do they acknowledge that this does occur or not? That's that's my my statement.
Yeah, thanks for the statement, Mike.
And.
We got one more.
Hi, I'm Nancy, Nancy Scott. Um, we've been talking a lot about the evaporation of the water in the lakes. I'm just wondering if the state's also considered the impact of the loss of water from the rock removal. Um, and I'm also, I know there's lots of water concern, but I'm very concerned about the air quality um, and the sound quality. Like you said, there's so many people, we live right here. It's not down the road and and uh, the people purchasing it and doing that, they don't live right here. We do. So that's my comment.
Thanks, Nancy. All right. Next up is Jeff Dodd. So Jeff, uh, you're unmuted on our end. Feel free to begin when you're ready.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, well, I also did not have time to uh, submit my question during Q and A, but I will submit that so it's on record via email or on your website, but can we, can we talk about getting back to um, maybe a little bit of common sense about everything we're talking about? We have NRM that did their own soil borings or hired a third party to do their research. So my question would be, why wouldn't, was it Fishback? I'm not sure who it was. Why wouldn't their research support their customers? Uh, w- wanting to put this gravel pit in? And then Eagle stated that monitoring wells would be monitored. And there were wells that were on site that were installed by NRM or a third party. Which through NRM's application to Parma Township versus the application to Eagle, it was found there were some differences, just like Mike Wozinski just spoke about. So I would, I would just ask that Eagle takes into account that who's doing the actual research on behalf of Parma Township and not listening to somebody that wants to make millions of dollars and bringing in all their entourage to make that money versus what is right? Um, another question is how's Eagle going to handle this workload when it's it's been known as public knowledge that Eagle's been understaffed? So, you know, it states that we will, we should, we will look at the monitoring wells. We'll do a five-year um, analysis on a site. Well, a lot can happen in five years. I mean, I'm in the industry too, you know. You blow a hydraulic line, wh- where's that going? I know where it's going. You know, you guys know, Eagle, you guys know, it's going in the ground. Um, I guess my last thing is, is there's an onsite existing irrigation well that caused issues to the groundwater decades ago. I have not found proof on that, but I guess if I need to find proof on that, I mean, th- that should tell you right there that should, this should definitely be a no. That a simple, I believe it's a ten inch or twelve inch irrigation well, just to irrigate four hundred acres caused issues with groundwater. So what's this gonna do? So I just ask that you 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 just look at it and sit back and think, wow. If I wanted something, I'm gonna hire all the people that I know that are gonna support it. Well, you guys need to do your own research as well as Parma Township and not rely on the research of who wants to make the money. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Jeff. All right. At this point, that's all of our raised hands. We'll give it a couple more seconds. And again, uh, if you haven't made a comment yet and would like to make a comment, or there's someone on the line who hasn't made a comment, um, feel free to raise your hand and zoom using the raised hand icon at the bottom, or if you're on this phone, select pound two. Uh, if we don't have any other raised hands, we'll move on to the next uh, part of the hearing tonight, which we're gonna go through those other ways to submit a comment again. And then also provide you with Maddie's contact information. Um, so you can provide, uh, ask additional questions. Um, and so I'm still not seeing any raised hands. So Maddie, um, would you please read the closing statement tonight? Oh, wait, uh, Jeff just raised his hand. Let me see. Jeff, do do you have someone else there who would like to make a comment? You can unmute yourself and answer that if you'd like.
No, thanks. I was trying to exit. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, no problem. All right. Now, Maddie, it'd be great to read the uh, closing statement for us tonight.
All right. Thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just to remind those that may still want to make a comment, comments can be submitted via My Enviro Portal, email or US mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
Yeah, thanks, Maddie. Um, as Maddie mentioned, I've got the other ways to submit a comment here uh, in front of you by My Enviro submission HPQ G two J zero B four J M B. Uh, we'll put that in the chat and then um, to bar by mail to Maddie O- Orler, O R L E R, Water Resources Division, Jackson District Office, three zero one East Lewis Glick Highway. That's Jackson, Michigan, four nine two zero one. And like Maddie mentioned, it'll be open until uh, September sixteenth. And then I have uh, Maddie's contact information here as well, in case you have additional questions. Um, Maddie's phone number is five one seven two nine zero five five seven five, and that's five one seven two nine zero five five seven five. Or by email at OrlerM at michigan.gov, and that's spelled O R L E R M at M I C H I G A N dot gov. Again, O R L E R M at michigan.gov. All right. And so with that, uh, Jeff, uh, as a district supervisor for tonight, wondering if you had any closing comments for us?
Yeah, um, I, you know, I just really wanted to extend my thank you to everybody who attended the hearing tonight and provided comments or questions. Um, this is a really important part of our process um, as we go through our review of the application, being able to hear from the public and get these types of comments. Um, i- is is definitely valuable and and we are going to consider everything that we've heard tonight. I think we've got, we got some really good comments and questions. Um, I think the team and I will probably have a discussion after and and we'll try to address anything that maybe we weren't able to cover tonight because of time. Um, you know, if we have your contact information as part of your registration, we'll try to reach out to you through that. Um, and we provided the additional information for contacting Maddie, um, if you have additional questions, but but again, um, thank you all um, for attending. Um, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Yeah, thanks to our our panel uh, for being here tonight, everyone who tuned in on all your, all your great questions. I put Maddie's contact that information back up there, just in case you didn't get it the first time. Uh, last thing I'll say is just a reminder, this public hearing was recorded. It'll be on our YouTube channel here in a couple of days, uh, so you'll be able to um, have access to it, watch it or forward on at that time. So with that, hope you all have a great rest of your evening and good night.